Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for December 5, 2022. Tonight, our clerk is absent, Charmaine Arredondo, and so we have Deputy City Clerk Karen Roberts working with us tonight. And last week, we had excused our deputy mayor from this meeting, but he's here and Councilmember Robertson is not, so we need to excuse her absence. Is there a motion to do that?
I move to excuse Councilmember Robertson for tonight's meeting.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I'm just going to call you clerk because I'm used to that. So could you, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Robinson.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Nguyen House.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale, can you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pardon? Waiting for what? Oh, yeah, right. Okay, so goodness, I'm sorry, I have to get something because we have somebody very special here tonight, and I want to make sure that I say the right thing. So, hold on. There we go. So, it's really amazing, the high school students in our city who are these wonderful poets, and Newport High School has turned out another wonderful poet that we have tonight, Diane Sun. The National Student Poets Program in the country is the highest honor for youth poets, presenting original work. She's a senior at Interlake High School. I guess Newport High School had the other one, and you're at Interlake High School, right? Okay, got it. Senior at Interlake High School, and you're one of five outstanding high school poets chosen as the 2022 Class of National Student Poets, and your work exhibits exceptional creativity, dedication to your craft. You're now serving a one-year term as National Student Poetry Ambassador. So I'd like to welcome you and congratulate you, and we'd like to have you speak and hopefully read a poem and then get our picture taken with you. Welcome.
Hello.
Hi. Yes, it's Sun.
Great. So this poem is called "A Recipe for Steaming Almost Dragon," and this is also the poem that I had the opportunity to share at the White House as well this past September.
And you are Diane Sun?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Before I begin, there are two definitions before I begin reading the poem. First, longmen, which means the dragon gate, and then Chinese mythology, carps that leap over a waterfall through the dragon gate become dragons. And second, Qingzhenglong, which means steam dragon. With that being said, a recipe for steaming almost dragon. Every few centuries, when the carp gathered at the base of the longmen and thunder clouds riled with legend and youth, we waded into the brinks of the waterfall and waited. That night, we would feast upon Qingzhenglong. First, check for freshness. Its scales should be taut, a bowstring still drawn long after the arrow has departed. Its eyes should be clear, a divine glimmer of a future once promised. Its gills should be stark red, the intrusion of fate into viscera. Second, dress it to your liking. With a blade, furrow its body in angles such that its exterior still lays neatly. Only you should be aware of the aromatics buried in its torso, of the ginger rooted in its nervous system, of the scallions that replaced arteries. Third, steam for seven minutes. In death, we replicate glory with an opiate haze. Here we unwind the dreams tucked in little carp skulls, the lacy hemlines of cascades, the rumble of cast iron gates opening, the pale heat of the heavens. Taste, flesh cleaved from the mountainside, skin sheen in gold, and bones that prickle at the roof of the sky, still with the slight tang of thunder. Thank you.
That made me breathless. That's fantastic. I'm going to give you a standing ovation. Thank you so much. Let's get our picture done. Okay, next is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have oral communications, City Clerk. Do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes. Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. We have 15 pre-registered speakers this evening for oral comms. As a reminder, oral communications is for a total of no more than 30 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed to speak for three minutes, and only speakers, only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one particular side of a topic. It does look like we're going to run into an issue with topics this evening. We have four speakers registered to speak in support of the Bellevue Airfield Park Master Plan update, and our first speaker this evening is Alice Wang.
So before we start, so if we have more than one, three people speaking to one topic on one side of it, they will not be able to speak tonight. But if we have, it sounds like we have more than 30 minutes worth of speakers that are outside of that rule. So we have in our council policy that we can extend the public comment to after the meeting, continue the, at the end of the meeting for, for the public comments. So if you do not get a, if you qualify to speak but you don't have an opportunity to speak in this first 30, 30 minutes, if you'd like to stay till the end of the meeting, we will still be here. We'll still be interested to hear what you have to say, and also, please submit your comments by email as well. So let's go ahead. Thank you.
Our first speaker this evening is Alice Wang.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen House, and Councilmembers. My name is Alice Wang. I live at 15017 Southeast 44th Street, Bellevue, Washington. I'm a full-time working mom of three from Spirit Ridge, Newport, and Interlake. Thirteen years ago, my husband and I relocated to Seattle area and chose Bellevue to raise our young family because of its good schools, beautiful parks, and demographic diversity. We had been a pretty outdoorsy family until our oldest suffered from accessory navicular syndrome. Swimming became the only sport she could sustain without going through surgery. Only after that did we realize how hard it was to support a child go through swim, swim team and meets. In one year, we had to drive her to five different venues in three cities, from Renton to Mercer Island, every week due to lack of facilities in Bellevue. Tonight, as a first-generation immigrant parent of three, I would like to share with you three messages from many of my fellow Bellevue families. First, learn to swim, wait lists are long, swim lessons are being canceled due to staffing shortages, and many parents give up or end up joining expensive private clubs. In the last, past year, even the private clubs started, started turning down kids of entry-level swim teams due to limited space. It pains me to see young children who can swim all four strokes denied opportunities to join a swim team due to space. What's worse, lots of families that I know cannot afford the expensive private clubs and can only miss out on aquatic sports. This brings my second topic, point. A new Bellevue Aquatic Center at Bellevue Airfield Park will be a source of pride and equity for all students and families, especially those who cannot experience other sports due to physical limitations or financial constraints. It will be a safe, inclusive space where everyone belongs, where entrance does not require a hefty $5,000 initiation fee. I can see my second grader growing up and training with his classmates, who otherwise would not be, have the chance to join the private clubs. As a parent, in my spare time, I also train for triathlon. I can't wait to see parents who normally would have to sit in cars due to lack of indoor space enjoying the facility to connect and train for our own goals while waiting for our children, and then grow with them and be their role models by achieving our own goals. Lastly, but not least, developing Bellevue Airfield Park and putting a new public community aquatic center at the park will not only benefit the 600 Spirit Ridge families in its proximity, but will also demonstrate how the combination of park elements, trails, sports fields, picnic areas, gather spaces, and aquatic center can offer something good for everyone. Thank you all for helping us build a more inclusive and welcoming community that puts everyone's well-being at a high priority, especially those who are physically and financially challenged like we were. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Mark Feeny, who is joining us remotely. Mr. Feeny, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen House, and Councilmembers. My name is Mark Feeny. I live in Bellevue, and I am Aquatics Director at the Samina Swim and Recreation Club in the Lake Hills neighborhood. I was born and raised in Bellevue and grew up going to the Samina Club and the Bellevue Aquatic Center. During university, I lived in Vancouver, British Columbia, and worked within and experienced what a fully funded and developed aquatic center program could provide for the community. As an aquatic director, I've served on many regional and state committees, such as the WRPA Aquatics Network, the Washington Drowning Prevention Network, and the Washington Department of Health COVID Guidelines Task Force. Through these lenses, I can see the dire need for more aquatic space and programming in our community for both the health and safety of our residents. The Samina Club serves over 1,750 member families and provides thousands of swim lessons per year, along with aquatic summer camps and a vast array of recreational programming. As one of Bellevue's longest-running recreation clubs, we have served generations of Bellevue residents and created a strong culture of belonging that is unique to our community. Over the past five years, we've seen a dramatic increase in demand for recreational opportunities, especially in their aquatic environment, that is quickly outpacing our ability to provide them. I'll share the need that Samina sees for aquatic programming and facility capacity and the opportunities for Samina that will be created with a new comprehensive Bellevue Aquatic Center at Bellevue Airfield Park. Our swim lesson program fills up almost instantly. We currently provide about 650 children per month with swim lessons, but our waitlist currently set at about 300 extra students. Over the last five years, the strain has slowly been building to the point where we can no longer accommodate non-member registrations, and we're eliminated to just our membership. This was only made worse by COVID, which crippled many area aquatic and recreation facilities. We've also seen increased demand from external organizations such as USA Swimming Teams, Water Polo Teams, and Scuba Groups. While we've been able to provide pool access to Interlake High School and local USA Swimming Teams, such as Eastside Aquatic Swim Team, we constantly have inquiries for more pool time. As a nonprofit 501(c)(7) organization, we are unable to provide as many scholarship opportunities as needed to ensure all of our youth have access to comprehensive water safety programming. By creating a new aquatic center at Bellevue Airfield Park, this will take the strain off by providing community with more options and opportunities to get in the water. It'll provide more pool space for local swim teams and high schools and allow us to provide our limited pool time back to our membership, giving us more flexibility in trying new programs to meet the constantly changing needs of the membership and the communities. This will also allow us to create more training opportunities for new lifeguards and swim instructors. As you may know, this is a national and local problem where there's a shortage of both lifeguards and swim instructors. I believe that developing Bellevue Airfield Park and putting a new public community aquatic center at this park will not negatively hurt the Samina Swim and Recreation Club. We provide a different culture in community that a public pool, and that is our main selling point. We have always competed with other aquatic centers, and adding another does not change this.
Mr. Feeny, your time is up.
Thank you.
Our next speaker on the list this evening is Susan Papalardo.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen House, and Councilmembers. My name is Susan Papalardo, and I work and play in Bellevue, and I'm the co-founder and president of Splash Forward. Thank you for this opportunity. With the recent Parks Levy passing and the upcoming biennial budget, the city will continue the great investments in ensuring equitable access to places to play, restore, and most importantly, connect. Our parks, recreation facilities, community centers are our most important community places. They are our social infrastructure and are essential, as, as essential as the transportation infrastructure being built across Bellevue. They are investment in people. As the wealthiest mid-sized city in the nation and one of the most racially and linguistically diverse in the state, we need more places that bridge our diversity and keep us connected. An aquatic center builds community while offering essential life skills. The exciting opportunities for the elements being considered for Bellevue Airfield's Park Master Plan create a wide variety of indoor and outdoor community spaces that will be a hallmark for the city, breathing life into an undeveloped park that can be enjoyed by many more people across all ages, abilities, and backgrounds. Located in East Bellevue, will give our most diverse communities a front door access. The park amenities, along with an aquatic center, will have something for everyone. As a roughly $50 million private fundraising partner in realizing the new Bellevue Aquatic Center, Splash Forward is supporting the master planning process, preparing and preparing our nonprofit. As outlined in the packet I shared with you on Friday, we are encouraging participation and cultivating engagement within the neighborhoods, schools, and organizations, such as the nearby community pools. We have shared the details with you on community input and a summary of our analysis on Airfield Park site and how a new aquatic center creates opportunity for the existing aquatic center. We welcome continued dialogue. We will continue to create awareness and participation, and this is in addition to our work to develop our fundraising capacity and partnerships required. A few highlights. We have been awarded a $15,000 King County grant, our first, to support our Introduction to Aquatics and Water Safety Summer Camp, held in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Bellevue, Rainier Athletes, and Samina. This coming weekend, we registered five high school students for lifeguard training at the Bellevue Aquatic Center, bringing this year's total to 62 students and 676 to date. We've created an opportunity for students to become paid swim instructors and earn volunteer hours for, with our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Bellevue After-School Program to be held at the aquatic center. Lifeguards and swim instructors are essential to operate our pools. We can think of no better location than having a pool in a park. A pool in Airfield Park will make our community stronger. I look forward to hearing your input and questions, and together, we will keep, help Bellevue continue to be a city and a park. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Court Olson.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm, my primary mission tonight is to offer my thanks to all of you and city staff for the agreement that's going to help our environmental stewardship plan succeed. But before I get into that thank you, I'd, I'd like to put a little perspective around it. It was about 10 years ago that I started talking to Bellevue staff about what the city might do for climate catastrophes that we see on the radar. And I figured out pretty quickly that one, one lone little voice like mine wasn't going to be too effective, and started to enlist others, and you know, the end of the story is we, we got People for Climate Action started up. And I'm here not representing them necessarily tonight, I'm speaking on my own, but I'm sure that the vast majority, if not all of them, would agree with our thanks for getting this interlocal agreement in the works. That said, well, some might think we've come a long way, baby, so to speak, and we have. We got a heck of a long way to go yet. There is a lot to be done. We see some vision in the interlocal agreement suggesting that we're, we're headed the right direction in our, in our vision, but we, we need a whole lot of implementation yet and probably a little more vision than what's already being described. I wanted to also share that People for Climate Action is active in all the other four cities involved in the interlocal agreement and actually, actually 12 more cities in King County, many of which would like to get on board with that interlocal agreement and pool together the resources to make these sorts of things for our residential homeowners workable. But one last qualification before the thank you, it's really going to take more money than you've so graciously allocated in the current biennial budget to, to make the progress that we need. So we'll be coming back and reminding you of that as you go on into the next budget year and start talking about that. But we really do thank you and the city staff, City Manager Miyaki, and Michael Katterman, the new department head in that field, for all your good work on the interlocal agreement, and we look forward to working with you much, much more. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Barbara Braun. Ms. Braun, are you here? Excuse me, Ms. Braun is attending virtually. Let me allow her to speak. Ms. Braun, can you hear me?
Can I hear you?
Yes, we can. Your time, your time begins now.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Leaders. My name is Barbara Braun. I live at 13609 Southeast 43rd Place in Bellevue. I would like to comment briefly on tonight's study session on the Eastside Climate Partnership Interlocal Agreement, which includes the Energy Smart Eastside Heat Pump Program. As a member for Climate, People for Climate Action, I have been included in the heat pump program since its inception, and I have acted as a citizen ambassador to promote the program in my neighborhood. In general, I'm very impressed with how well the program is run and with the quality of heat pump contractors the program has engaged. However, I'm very concerned this program, as currently structured, will not result in very many households converting from gas furnaces to electric heat pumps. The reason for this concern is the lack of incentives or payback on such an expensive conversion for non-low-income residents. While I strongly applaud the inclusion of incentives for low-income residents in the agreement, if our goal is to maximize residential electrification, as called for in the ESP, we must incent many residents to convert. Consider my personal experience. We received a quote from the program contractor for roughly $20,000. This is a big investment. Unlike the solar program, which provided state-funded electricity rebates to offset the initial investment over time, there are no such rebates or other incentives currently provided by the state, by PSC, or by the city for this program. As of now, the reasons to, for non-incentive households to convert might include to reduce their carbon footprint, to gain air conditioning in the summer, or to replace at life, end-of-life gas furnace. In my case, these incentives are, these reasons are, are good enough for me to go ahead and make that investment, but I'm concerned that others will find these reasons non-compelling. The city estimates heating our homes and businesses accounts for 30% of our collective carbon emissions. Since this is currently our flagship program aimed at reducing residential emissions, I suggest the program needs to work at the state and regional levels, as well as with PSC, to develop a significant incentive scheme that will motivate a meaningful percentage of Eastside residents to convert. This seems like the most straightforward, high-impact effort that could be made to implement our ESP program. I asked the council to amend the interlocal agreement draft language to include developing a strong incentive program aimed at maximizing, maximizing residential conversion to the section labeled, quote, "Key Aspects of Interlocal Agreement Include," unquote. This should be in addition to the focus on helping low-income households and affordable housing developments that's already in the draft. I also request the council call for an investigation on what can be done to develop a strong incentive program and to analyze the conversion rate projections with or without incentives prior to adopting the agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Braun. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Our next speaker signed up this evening is Janice Heine.
Good evening, I'm Janice Heine, and I'm from the Bridle Trails neighborhood here in miraculous Bellevue, and I just wanted to say, I'm talking about Christmas changes everything, and the birth of Christ brings hope to the world. Hope. We see, Christmas has changed our calendar before and after Christ. Christmas has the most effect on our economy, shopping, kids wanting presents. But for me, it is the birth of Christ, and I want to read you the actual beginning 2,000 years ago. "The night in a field near Bethlehem, there were shepherds watching over their flocks. Suddenly, an angel of the Lord appeared to radiance, in radiant splendor before them, lighting up the field with blazing glory of God. And the angel said, 'Don't be afraid, for I've come to bring good news, the most joyous news the world has ever heard, for it is for everyone everywhere. For today in Bethlehem, a rescuer was born for you. He is the Lord Yahweh, Messiah. You will recognize him by this miraculous sign. You will find a baby wrapped in a manger in cloths of clothes, strips of clothes, and lying in a manger. Then all of a sudden, multitudes of angels saying, 'Glory to God in the highest, in the realms of heaven, for there is peace and good hope to all men.'" And I just want to say, Christmas to me is the birthday of Christ, because 60 years ago, somebody said to me, "Do you know that God sent his son as a gift?" Why? Because he loves you. And you know, I had never, I did not know there was a God, and I didn't, I had never in 18 years been told anybody loves me. So I signed up. Here I am, 60 years later, and I testified to you, he is still alive, and I am a witness, he's alive in me, Christ in me, the hope of glory. And Merry Christmas all. You have envelopes and a little gift because I thank you so much for being on the city council. Thank you, and Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you. Our next, our next speaker on the list is Lindsay Firsch.
Hi, Mayor, and good evening, Council.
Welcome.
My name is Lindsay Firsch. I've been a resident of Bellevue most of my life, attending the Bellevue Public Schools, K-12, and even returning to teach for close to 10 years before having my kids. My husband and I have lived in Bellevue since. My goal here is to express why I'm in opposition of the proposed deep penetration into the forested area west of the pond to install picnic tables and parking stalls. forested area west of the pond to install picnic tables and parking stalls and convince you to have the standards that allow us to live in a Bellevue I know and love, one that maintains a safe community, prioritizing parks as safe places for people who live in Bellevue to enjoy. Let's start with some facts. We know there's a higher incidence of people without homes in Bellevue. We know they're occupying our parks. I've been told by Bellevue police that they can't ask them to leave unless they have somewhere else they can go, which they don't. We know our, more people are coming to Bellevue because we have good parks. We know there's lots of drug activity aligned with I-90 right now. And we know that some of the mental illness and drug addiction can coincide with people who are in the parks. I have a few incidents to share. Cassandra Elephant, in the early 2000s, a mother of four, pregnant, was raped and murdered just outside of Bellevue College by someone who was mentally ill in the parks, and he was dreaming when he did it. I was on a run with my boys early in the morning, saw a tent in the woods. A coyote kind of alarmed us, but really, I should have been more concerned about this person sleeping in the woods. I called the police and they had it removed. This was a few years ago, though. A neighbor was exposed and followed by a man up in the trail in the Airfield Park, and people have been cutting through our yards and back up to the Greenbelt Trail. And more recently, somebody rummaged through my car and was most likely doing fentanyl and meth, exposing my children to the yucky drugs. I'm just here to say, please don't add a secluded park, and please don't let them occupy any of our parks. Please give us mom-safe places to take our kids on a run without worrying about an occupied tent in the woods. Please let a grandmother walk their dog without being stalked and exposed by a person who just is there in the park and not doing so well. Please help us to feel safe in Bellevue, our city within a park. Let's be sure our parks are habitable and safe for the citizens of Bellevue, including the green belts beyond our homes and the trails that back up to our homes.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Loge.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to air my concerns about the proposed development in Airfield Park. My name is Laura Logi, and I am a resident of the neighborhood that directly abuts Airfield Park. I have two children, ages seven and 11, who have attended Spirit Ridge and now Telecom Middle School. I have a cat, and I raise chickens in my backyard. Almost every day, I walk the trails that go through the park, around the duck ponds, and skirt the green space that goes through through there. And I love to see all the wild animals that come through there. Hear the coyotes at night in the summertime and just experience all the wild birds and everything that goes through that space. It's amazing to be able to have the connection to nature. Having grown up in Montana, that's been a very integral part of my life. My main concerns with the proposed development are mostly with the proposed picnic area deep into that green space, having to do with safety, destruction of the natural canopy, and as well, a certain wildlife displacement that would happen with development there. First of all, as Lindsay was saying, with young children who walk to school or to the bus every day, I need to know that they're safe on their journeys. We have a wonderful, vibrant, youthful neighborhood, and with these hidden picnic areas, I do worry about the safety being compromised by those who would utilize the spaces for less-than-virtuous behaviors. Secondly, part of what makes Bellevue so great is easy access to the green spaces, including this relatively untouched green canopy with well-developed scrubby space and natural occurring drainages. It would be a major and destructive undertaking to level these trees and the ground to create a picnic area and parking spaces that I don't honestly see a real use for. There are four major parks within short walking distance from my home, all with picnic areas, and I never see them utilized. Why would we want to eliminate this wonderful resource for something that I don't even understand why we would need it? And finally, and this one's a personal reason for me, and that is the wildlife displacement. As a chicken and cat owner, I appreciate that the wildlife have a place of their own. We already worry about frequent visitors of raccoons who have taken some of my chickens, but I also know that bobcats, coyotes, skunk, opossum, and birds of prey would be displaced by the development and use of the park, especially into that green space. This displacement would push them into our yards, which would endanger our own pets and our own families. So in conclusion, I ask you to consider an alternative to the proposed picnic area and leave the canopy untouched. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Camelia Ensler.
Good evening. Mayor Robinson and Deputy Mayor, I hope I say this, Newan House. I'm a Canadian too, so. I am, my name is Camelia Ensler, and I live on 16660 Southeast 26th Place in Bellevue, very close to Spirit Ridge. And I am here to propose the idea of a new bylaw for the permitted residential construction noise, the hours that it is operating at this point. If we go to our website, the hours that the construction for residential area is permitted at this point is Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Saturday and Sundays from 9:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m. There is no other days with no noise permitted. So this allows over 12 hours of constant drilling, hammering, usage of machinery, and other necessary equipment, and no break on the weekends, which can cause very, a very stressful environment for our residents who live close to the, like, right next to the construction site. Not only these hours can be very harmful to our mental health, but also they can be very stressful for those who work from home. And now, commercial construction noise is only allowed until 6:00 p.m. in our city. I understand this limit is because of a usage of heavy equipment, which may be used for commercial constructions. But if a residential construction is right next to your house, the extreme loud noises can be just as damaging as heavy machinery by carrying the same level of sound. Also, what is really confusing about the bylaw that we have on our website is the specifics of what level of sound or the usage of what type of machinery is permitted for these long hours in the residential area. Are these hours being permitted for usage of lawn mowers on the weekends or hammering nails on our walls? Or, or is it okay to use very heavy equipment for residential constructions? And since coronavirus pandemic started in 2020, many families are now working from home. This seemed to be a new trend for many companies as it creates more flexibility for their employees. By changing the current permitted construction noise hours for the residential area from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on weekdays and 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays, not only this bylaw will allow more peace and quiet for our residents during the week, but also it could generate revenue for the city of Bellevue if the construction has to apply for extended hours. We love our police department and our fire department and the city workers. We would like to provide the extended revenue to our city. Thank you very much for having me tonight.
Thank you so much. And that, we have now reached the 30-minute limit for oral communications.
So how many more people do we have?
We have a total of six more.
So this is a pretty short meeting. I think we'll get out of here early so we can resume oral communications at the end of this meeting. So if you'd like to stay, please do. And if you choose not to, please send your comments into our email. Okay. So we have reports of committee council boards and commissions, and we have art commission recommendations. Mr. Miyake, would you like to tell us about that?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we do have a report from the Arts Commission regarding recommended funding allocations for the 2023 Eastside Arts Partnership Support Grant and Projects Grant. Tonight, after the presentation, staff are seeking council approval of the motion of the Arts Commission's funding recommendations. By way of background, the city has offered community arts and culture grants since the early 2000s, has a way to ensure residents and visitors can experience innovative art and diverse cultural traditions. Joining us this evening are Lori Hoffman, our Arts and Community Manager of the Community Development Department, and Maria Hui, Chair, who, Hui, who is the Chair of our Arts Commission. Sorry about that. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Lori.
Councilmembers, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, thank you so much for having us tonight. All right. Tonight, we are seeking a motion for council to approve the art grant allocations made by our allocations committee and approved by the Arts Commission. Our presentation will be fairly brief tonight. First off, we are going to cover our recent one-time council allocation and this, and then this year's program grant changes. We will then present the allocation made for next year by the allocations committee and approved by the Arts Commission, including a deep dive into the three applicants chosen for our Power Up for Equal Access Grants and the anticipated public benefits. First off, we'd really like to thank the council for the additional one-time conversion from our CIP fund into the general fund for our art grants. That money will be used very lovingly. We're very excited about that. We plan to use the recent conversion for project grants in 2023. We will open that application up to 501(c)(3) organizations providing arts and culture projects in Bellevue. Any of those organizations will be eligible to apply. You do not see that, those funds reflected in tonight's allocation. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Maria Lau-Hui.
Thank you, Lori. And thank you, council, for the opportunity to present the Arts Commission recommendation on the grant allocation. This year's, the Arts Commission made some changes to the annual grants, and in March, council approved the guiding principles for the grants you see on the slide in front of you. These principles inform the following changes to the grants. First, there are two new add-on grant opportunities for grantees to address underserved communities and to activate the Bellwet Art District. Second, Eastside Arts Partnerships are now changing to a two-year funding cycle with applicants applying every two years instead of every year. Third, the project grants are now being offered with free preset requests a month. And fourth, there is a more streamlined and simplified application process, which has been heavily informed by the feedback we receive from the arts and cultural community. For 2023, the Arts Commissions have a budget of $181,000 to allocate. This budget was a combination of general operation funds and one-time grants for cultural and the national endowment for the arts. Arts organization and artists working in Bellevue submitted 53 applications totaling over $454,000 in funding requests, a 67% increase from 2022 request. The $181,000 allocation equates to 40% of the total request by the applicants. For 2023, the allocation committee and Arts Commission have chosen to fund 29 of the 34 Eastside Arts Partnership support applications and 16 of the 19 project grants. The committee score each application based on specific criteria for each type of the grant and convey to discuss the scores and allocate awards last month. For the two new add-on grant opportunities, the allocations committees and arts commissions have chosen to fund three Power Up for Equal Access Grants and five Bellwet Bonus Grants. The Power Up for Equal Access Grants will help applicants fill cultural gaps in underserved communities, and the Bellwet Bonus will bring activities funded through the project grant program to the Bellwet Art Districts. The recommended amounts and criteria for evaluation can be found in the package before you. These recommendations have been approved by the Arts Commissions. And now I'm going to introduce the three Power Up for Equal Assets Grant recipients, which will receive $5,000 grant, $5,000 grant money in addition to their Eastside Partnership Support Grants. These Power Up Grants are a great way to give additional supports to these organizations doing important works in the arts and cultural community. Tysphia is a nonprofit social justice arts organization whose mission is to inspire social change through thought-provoking South Asian film, literature, and storytelling. Tysphia serves close to 10,000 audiences per year through its South Asian Film Festival, Literature Festival, South Asian Women Festival, and monthly events. This additional grant will greatly help Tysphia to serve, serve their artists and audiences with events that fill cultural gaps in regional and national programming. $5,000 can support about half the production of a short social justice film via the Tysphia Film Fund. It can pay the venue rental cost for their community speaks or Yanni Kebet programs that use personal monologues to break down taboos and heal individuals. It can pay an artist of color to design their posters and branding. And it could pay one of their staff for a month of work. By investing in organizations lead by women of color, the city can ensure these funds trickle down to communities of colors at all levels. Music Works Northwest was also selected for a Power Up Grant this year. Music Works is a nonprofit community music school dedicated to increasing access to music education and musical experiences. They provide individual music lessons, classes, ensembles, music therapy, and summer camps for all ages and abilities. Music Works increased access in the community through three concerts and events, tuition, assistance, and educational outreach. Music Work will use its Power Up Grant to strengthen two programs. Bellevue Public School Outreach Program and its Financial Aid Assistance Program. The Public School Outreach helps students by giving them an opportunity to learn from instructors specializing in the instruments they play in smaller settings. And Financial Aid Assistance will help students who do not have the financial resources to take regular classes and lessons. The third organization receiving the Power Up for Equal Access Bonus Grant is, excuse me, is VC Bynum Arts and Education. VC Bynum Arts' mission is to empower communities through socially relevant programming with a focus on educating and connecting artists of color and providing avenues to contribute talents. Through music, dance, and poetry, they uplift the African-American culture to share with awe. Their primary audiences are communities of color and patrons from all backgrounds that support this mission, which includes raising funds for food equity, youth programs, and other causes. The Power Up Grant will be an important asset to expand the impact of VC Bynum Arts as they grow into a more influential arts organization. They are presently working with another local dance organization to secure space in downtown Bellevue that is available through 2025. A consistent location will provide a foundation VC Bynum Arts need to serve local students and working artists, and will offer assets to African and African-American culturally-focused classes, which are currently lacking on the Eastside. Securing these funds will help set a proper foundation for VC Bynum Arts as they lift the diversity on the Eastside for its art. As always, the public benefit offered in 2023 will be tremendous. We anticipate it. Artists and art group funded by the city will serve over 1.6 million residents and visitors in 2023 through in-person and virtual programs, performances, cultural festivals, and art education. Our city support will ensure over 900,000 people have access to these opportunities through free or reduced emissions. These arts and cultural organizations and projects will also support higher levels of creative engagement. An estimated 2,600 artists and 4,200 volunteers will have the opportunity. An estimated 2,600 artists and 4,200 volunteers will have the opportunity to contribute their creative talents to Bellevue in 2023. At this time, the Arts Commission recommends council to approve the 2023 grant allocations made by the allocation committees and approved by the Arts Commission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair Lau-Huie, thank you so much for being here tonight, and thank you for this presentation, both of you. I'm going to start with a motion, and then we'll call for comment and questions.
I move to approve the Arts Commission's recommendations for the 2023 Eastside Arts Partnership Support Grant and Project Grant allocations.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes, we'll start with you, since you're the liaison to the Arts Commission.
Yeah, thank you very much, Lori and Maria. This is a really exciting time in our whole progress in the last year and years before. And the Arts Commission, if to tell everybody here, it's just an amazing group. They really put this program together, worked with the community, and they're in the middle of, we're all in the middle of, a great renaissance, I think, in arts and culture in Bellevue. Or growth, maybe not renaissance, it hasn't been here as much as it has in the past. I guess that's not exactly a good way to put it. But it's really exciting to see the uplift of applications. And of course, what that means is our budgeting is always kind of behind, based on what we've been doing before. And so we, the council and staff took a look at it, and next year we'll be doing more. And it's all, it's not just doing it for the whole piece, but giving innovation, you know, kind of helping with it and not just paying for the whole piece, of course. But it's really difficult in the community to get these pieces going and working with the groups, so they're nonprofits and individuals and all. And it's a kind of an interesting thing, because in the creative economy, the return on culture and arts is great, by great magnitude, in money to the community overall. But it's people who are struggling still that help with that. So we're trying to balance that and bring, I think, a lot different arts into the community. And again, the Arts Commission has just done a tremendous job. And, you know, we're working on this in a lot of different ways. And I think, again, it's just a growth in Bellevue. It indicates, one other indicator, that Bellevue is changing and growing, and we need to, you know, work together on this and help, again, through the community and through the city, working with people to put together new things and encourage people. And the more we do that, the more we'll have for people to go out and enjoy. So it's just a really good story. But again, it goes back to hard work by the community, people who are doing the arts and culture, and also by the staff, and the staff and the Arts Commission. We have the job in the council to help to get the policy out and to work with you and all, and, you know, make the final decisions on the money and stuff. But overall, we give the policy and guidance, but you're the ones who really put it together. And I have to say, I've been working with the commission for some time, and I think we're in the best spot we've been in a long time. And thanks to you two as leaders, and thanks to the commission, and to all the artists out there. So this is a happy one for us to vote on. Thank you.
Councilmember, excuse me, Berksdale.
Thank you. I'll just extend my thank you as well. I know that both of you and the rest of staff in the commission deeply care about arts and culture, and I appreciate the time that you've put into it. My comment's going to be pretty simple. You know, I think the value of arts and culture helps people in our community, in our diverse community, feel and see themselves in their culture and our community. And I think that's impactful and plays a very strong role, not only in terms of continuing to grow as a diverse community, but also helping to retain our diverse community members. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Maria and Lori. You know, I always think that art unites us, especially now when there's so much going on and people have experienced a number of different things as we are emerging from COVID. And I think that arts and culture is a way for us to have those shared lived experiences together as well as learning about others' expressions through the arts. Because sometimes, it can be really tough topics to talk about. And so I would just say that as we move forward, I'm really glad that we are looking at increasing the budget as well as the number of different ways that our community can express through the arts. And I know we see more arts on our walls out in City Hall, and I just urge more of these spaces where our community can express their many, many art forms. So super excited about this, happy to support it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Councilmember Lee.
I want to thank the commission and also the staff for working on behalf of the council. You know, early on, we have the public communication. You know, we heard that faith, hope, love, you know, I mean, that's what humans aspire to. It's a lot easier to talk about money, roads, to measure, you know, quantities. But it's very hard to measure quality. What you're doing, arts, is quality. It's how do you affect people, how do you change people? Right now, we're talking about how to bring people together. I think we all see, or have seen, the last few years, how people are divided and people are struggling. You know, politics are very divided. We are very polarized. You know, we talk about religions, we talk about everything else. But art and culture brings people together, because we're looking at the same thing that appeals, a drive inspires, so unify, you know, vision that we aspire to. So it's very challenging, it's not easy. So how do we measure it, how do we choose it, how do we pick it? And I think that's, hopefully, we'll work on those things. I think we are agreeable. So you're, but I always also say that the devil is in the detail. We all agree on the vision, it's easy right now. We all want to talk to each other. We all love the same things. We all want to love everybody. But how many people really love everybody? So it's what you're doing to figure out how do we make it fit. So it's very important. So what I emphasize is what you're doing indeed is using the right medium, art culture. The important part is how do we actually bring people together? You know, the culture, the arts, let people do enjoy them together, celebrate together, work together, bring people together, not to separate them. I think that's the key. And I think you're making an effort to do that, you know, because you have the medium opportunity, and we trust you, we appreciate the work that you have to do. And you get criticisms, but you get very few praise, you know, right? But they always say that the, well, anyway, what you do is good. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you. I'll be quick and I'll just file along quickly. But Chair Hui and Lori, thank you so much for the presentation. And thank you to all the members of the Arts Commission for working on this. I'm very supportive of what we're bringing forward here tonight and the allocations. And not that, and obviously, what you've heard tonight is that we all care passionately about the arts. I hope that's come through loud and clear. And hence why we made an adjustment in our budget to even allow for a larger budget or funding allocation for this year. So one question I did have, and which I think creates a stronger reasoning to boost budgets in the future for the arts, as we constantly hear, you know, $1 spent on the arts usually brings in $4 to $5 back into the city. So I'm curious if, and if you don't have it right now, it can always come back to me privately, but I'm curious then, if these organizations and artists served 1.6 million residents, visitors, in addition to the nearly 1 million free and reduced admissions, do you have a sense of what that means in terms of dollar amount back to the city?
So I can tell you a national average. The last time Americans for the Arts did Arts and Economic Prosperity, it's a national study, they found that on average, an audience member or participant in an arts activity spent, in addition to the price of their ticket, an additional $33 in the community. Now, that survey was about six years ago, and it's a national average. We're currently in the process of studying that number for now and for Bellevue. So about, pardon me, October or November of this year, I'll give you that exact dollar. But it's very conservative to say, times that 1.6 million by $33.
That's a pretty good return on investment. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Well, I'm really excited to experience what this will fund. So thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for your work on the commission. I know, we're going to vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, it passes. Excellent. I know, it didn't, it sounded iffy. Okay, next up, we have the report of our city manager. There's two items, but only one that you'll be speaking to, the others in the pack.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor. The first item is just a written quarterly update on the city's recent economic development activity. It comes to you in your, under city manager's report in your package this evening. If there are questions, please feel to reach out to the staff for both the council and the viewing public. The second item is a really good news item, and that is Bellevue Essentials. This city's just completed its 11-week civics class. This is the 10th year anniversary of it. Now, we've had over 340 graduates. Neighborhood Services within the city has, will host a public celebration of the anniversary this Wednesday evening at City Hall. And I just would like to welcome Julie Ellenhorn, our Community Relations Coordinator, and two graduates this year, Angela Chung and Abigail Brown, to share the program's outcomes and the community impact over the past 10 years. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to you to kick this off, Julie.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newen House, and councilmembers. Did that get me to the next slide? Hold on just a moment. Well, let me go ahead and you'll get that first slide up, hopefully, because it's up for a while. Okay. Okay. So I've had the privilege of leading the Bellevue Essentials program since it started in 2013. And tonight, I'm excited to provide you with a briefing and to recognize the 10 years of impact and accomplishments of the Bellevue Essentials program. And I want to thank the city council for your ongoing support and, there we go, recognize all the department staff here at the city that make this program possible each year. If you can go back, I think you went past the first slide. Okay, back. There we go. Great. So Bellevue Essentials, as I said, launched in 2013. We just completed our 10th year of the program. And the program was designed with some goals in mind. We wanted to expose participants of the program to the daily operations of city government, just help them learn, what do we do here every day? And to build familiarity with government process and decision-making so that they would be comfortable interacting with city staff and leadership and being a part of what happens here in Bellevue. And lastly, we wanted to create a network of engaged, knowledgeable individuals who are available to serve the city and the broader community and who remain active over time. So we've looked back at the past 10 years, and I'm proud to say that I think we've met these goals. Our demand remains strong for the program. We average 61 applicants each year for our 35 spaces. We have about 40% male, 60% female attending our program. And over the 10 years, an average of 47% people of color, which reflects our community demographics as they have changed over the years. And we've seen a huge increase from when we started 10 years ago to where we are today. We also have, in nearly every year, represented all 16 of our neighborhood areas here in Bellevue. Our curriculum has evolved over the 10 years. Learning things from how to handle a fire hose to witnessing emergency medical, sorry, demonstrations, visiting the police evidence room, seeing behind the scenes how stormwater and sewers work, touring development in the Spring District, visiting parks, master planning different projects in interactive exercises, and exploring the changing demographics and diversity in our community. Each cohort spends 10 weeks learning and exploring Bellevue. And the bonus is, they develop relationships not only with their peers in the class, but with city staff and city leadership and with you. So often at the end of class, we ask our graduates to reflect on their Bellevue Essentials experience in just a word or two. So I just want to give you a moment to look at some of the things that we hear. Engaging, empowering, impactful, comprehensive, insightful, the list goes on. So after going through Bellevue Essentials, how do these graduates give back to our community? So over the 10 years, we've we've seen 58 board and commission members and elected officials serve over the 10 years. It does, it keeps moving. I didn't do it. So we won't worry about it for now. So we've had 58, as I said, board and commission members. They serve as leaders also in their neighborhoods, our graduates, and they are regularly tapped as knowledgeable resources for city projects, city committees, surveys, and they provide community voice on issues all the time. Bellevue Essentials provides a pathway for people to engage, and you'll see our graduates everywhere. I'm going to try to get back to that. You'll see our graduates everywhere slide. They're immersed at the city, but also in the community. We have graduates who are volunteering at Hope Link in the Bellevue School District, the Bellevue Art Museum, Jubilee Reach, Mary's Place, Life Spring, and many, many more organizations throughout Bellevue, making us a stronger, healthier community every year. Bellevue Essentials staff has also mentored staff at many other cities around the region to help them create civic engagement programs and make for a stronger region as well. So we're going to now go to our graduates. I'm happy to welcome Abigail Brown, who's going to speak as a member of the class of 2021 and tell you a little bit about her experience, and then Angela Chung from our class of 2020.
There you go. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
This is a really rare and special opportunity for me. I do see familiar faces here, some I met from the class, but also some from other engagements that I've had recently and also very much in the past. So this is interesting for me, because this isn't the first time I've spoken before the council. When I was in high school, I actually came here and I spoke before the council as an engaged citizen, someone who had grown up here and gone to all the schools. And it was a land use issue, and I won't get further into that, but you can imagine land use issues are a big thing here. And then, after that, I ended up working for the mayor and the city council. I worked for the city for some time, and then after that, life kind of gets in the way. I went off to law school, I worked for the Department of Justice, biotech, high tech. I'm in software now. And now I'm back. I'm back again as an engaged citizen. And the interesting thing about that is I thought I knew about the city, and then someone said, you should check out this class called Bellevue Essentials. And I was like, I used to work for the city, and they're like, yeah, some things have changed, you might want to check this out. So I did. Fortunately, I was accepted into the class, and I learned not only a lot of invaluable information, but was heartened as a citizen and one who was planning to become engaged again, how much had improved. You know, how many great things had happened since the time I had actually worked for the city and since I was in high school. So I'm much older now and getting re-engaged. And two of those, two of those options right now for me are both the Bellevue 2044 Planning Strategy Team, and I'm also serving as the Chair of the Bellevue Network on Aging. So my goal now, and some of you've actually seen me there, my goal now is to make sure that every time we plan or look at anything within the city of Bellevue that we run it through the prism of how it can impact the seniors that live in our city. And I think I have probably Bellevue Essentials to thank for a lot of this, because it's helped me become reconnected and re-engaged, you know, across many different departments in the city to help in that effort. Also, I have one more thing to say. I didn't have the experience that you saw in the photographs above. I was in the first all-virtual class. So it's a testament to not only the folks who put it together, because it was a very, it was the COVID class, but I still felt that it was an invaluable experience, still very engaging, still very helpful and inspiring, even though it was all virtual. So we can do it both ways.
Thank you, Abigail. I'd like to turn it over to Angela.
Hi, I'm Angela Chung, and I'd like to thank city council, city leadership, and all the staff for supporting Bellevue Essentials program over the past 10 years. I am a longtime community volunteer in Bellevue and beyond. I am a longtime community volunteer in Bellevue and beyond and a parent of two children and have been in Bellevue as a resident in the Somerset area for about 16 years. I like to say I bring a lot of my lived experience, knowledge, and skills as a community volunteer, but also as a business advisor and attorney to some of my volunteer roles and how I engage with my neighbors and residents. And I'd like to, you know, contribute to a better tomorrow, I guess. Let's see, this is the first time I've actually spoken to city council or, and in a group like this. So, I, and yeah, so I'm a little bit nervous, so, sorry about that. Let's see. I'm a, I'm a member of the 2020 class, which was also a virtual class in, for Bellevue Essentials. And that year was, as we can all probably agree, was a really interesting year where the world seemingly went on pause. We all, in a way, it was one of the best years, I feel, to have taken the course. It was a year of listening, a year, a year of bearing witness to what seems to have felt like a cumulative tragedy of commons in some way resulting in a series of challenges in health, social, humanitarian, political, economic, and other systems. But at the same time, we found compassion. We witnessed a lot of just incredible people catalyzed to speak up, sometimes for the first time taking action, to engage in courageous conversations that were full of inspiration. I was really impressed with the city of Bellevue, and I'm, I'm very honored and privileged to live in the city. And I'm, through the program, you know, I, I, it was a little bit of a challenging year for everybody, but I was really inspired by the mod of thought that staff puts into the work here in, in the city, the thoughtfulness, the engagement of the citizens. And actually, sitting here right now and listening to all the people speak, it's been really inspiring. It is really inspiring to just hear the level of engagement in our city. And so, that also inspires me to also continue to engage and engage more deeply. The program was pretty amazing in terms of just learning the inner workings of the city, the complexity of the issues in which you all face. We, you know, you all know about the growth and the challenges with transit and the diversity of, of the greatness of that and how, how we make that work and how we also maybe give voices to who's not in the room and who's not speaking up or who might not have that level of comfort and engagement or maybe cultural norms to be able to do that. So, I really am impressed with so many departments really asking really valuable questions and having these conversations. And so, yeah, I serve in a lot of different capacities. I've actually been on the, in the, did a little bit of conciliation and mediation work with your conflict resolution department, thinking a little bit about affordable housing and the equity concerns relating to that. I'm on your police advisory council for the API community, sharing feed on. Over the years, prior to Bellevue Essentials, I was working on a council with emergency management. So, the list goes on, but I'm very involved in neighborhood. I've met a lot of you in different capacities, but this is the first time I've actually seen you all together. So, I just wanted to spend time to thank you all for providing a really wonderful program. The staff has been remarkable during the pandemic. They shifted and they pivoted, and it was, it was pretty remarkable how we're able to just continue that commitment to engagement, to hearing voices, to informing everyone so that we could all do a little bit better. So, I want to thank you, yeah.
So, Abigail and Angela are certainly terrific examples of how our graduates get involved. And I want to tell you a little bit about this Wednesday night, our 10th anniversary. Our 2022 cohort of 35 will graduate in conjunction with our big celebration Wednesday evening here. We have attendance of 300 coming on Wednesday night, and that includes 138 alumni besides these two who need to come and, and meet and hear what they are doing to make our city a better place. We'll have our community partner sponsors with us Wednesday night, over 30 staff people, many of whom teach in the course every year, and over 100 community members coming out to recognize and celebrate civic engagement here in Bellevue. So, I look forward to seeing you all again on Wednesday. Thank you.
Well, great. Well, Angela and Abigail, thank you both so much for coming tonight and speaking. And Julie, thank you for this program. That's such an impressive program. I have one question. I have on my calendar 5:30 on Wednesday, and it says here 7:00.
The doors open at 6:30.
Okay, I gotta check my calendar then.
And the formal program begins at 7:00.
Okay, that's good to know.
We have a retrospective slideshow of the last 10 years that we'll be running in here from 6:30 to 7:00 that I'm gonna embarrass her. Angela put most of that together, and it's really fabulous. So, I'd encourage you to come close to 6:30, but the formal program will begin at 7:00.
Okay, great. Thank you, looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Okay, and then in the packet, we have the update on the economic development, which you already told us about. So, next, we have the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'm moved to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're gonna take a quick break here. We'll come back at 25 after on this clock. Two study session items tonight. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce them?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and council members. The first topic is council consideration of a proposed Eastside Climate Partnership Interlocal Agreement. You heard some comment under oral communications about this particular matter.
I'm hearing a lot of background noise, and I don't know if it's, is it maybe out in the hall? If Senator's gonna close the door, that'll be great. The acoustics are just amazing in this place, they really are. Okay, sorry, Mr. Miyake, go ahead.
Yes, so tonight, staff are seeking council consideration to bring this back at a future council meeting. And just with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to Emile King, Planning Director, and Jennifer Ewing, Environmental Stewardship Program Manager, both from the Community Development Department. Emile?
Thank you for the introduction, city manager Miyake, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Staff are really excited to bring forward this interlocal agreement tonight. As we now enter into year three of implementation of the Environmental Stewardship Plan, we're always looking for new ways to implement the actions in the plan. Before we get into the presentation, I'll just offer up a few brief comments. Staff are always looking for ways to increase both efficiency and effectiveness of our programs, and this is a key way of doing it. It really is a good news story about a thoughtful collaboration among Eastside cities that is gonna have measurable results, as you'll hear about tonight. So, we do have a short presentation Jennifer's gonna do, and then we can answer any questions or hear feedback from the council afterwards.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newen House, and members of the council. Again, excited to talk to you this evening about the Eastside Climate Partnership Interlocal Agreement. We are looking for direction to bring the interlocal agreement back for approval at a future meeting. So, to give you a bit of an overview of the interlocal agreement, the parties involved are the cities of Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, Issaquah, and Mercer Island. This came about, as Emile mentioned, we're wrapping up year two of implementation of our Environmental Stewardship Plan. Around the same time we, the council adopted Bellevue's Environmental Stewardship Plan, Kirkland and Redmond also had their plans adopted by their city councils, and Mercer Island and Issaquah were on the way to completing their plans. So, we were kind of sharing information during the planning process, and when we all had our plans adopted, we're really looking for opportunities to collaborate, to implement our plans. So, this is kind of born out of that effort over the past couple of years. The intent of the interlocal agreement really is to allow us to deepen our, our partnership and collaboration amongst the five cities. The main focus of the collaboration will be to manage the Energy Smart Eastside program, which I'll talk a little bit more about. The interlocal allows us to, you know, do things like joint procurement and partnerships, of course, leverage economies of scale and our shared funding. And then, what we're, the big thing we're excited about is looking to hire a shared, limited-term staff position to manage this program, so pooling funds from the, the five cities to hire a new position. The ILA does include provisions to, for other cities to join in the future. These five cities, you know, have a history of working together. together on the Eastside and as part of the K-4C, and kind of came together because, you know, part of the partnership has really been sort of similar priorities at the same time with similar abilities to really move those priorities forward in terms of staff capacity and funding. So that's kind of some of the secret to what has been making this partnership work. But yeah, again, we are open to other cities joining in the future. So as I mentioned, the ILA, the intent of it is to manage the Energy Smart Eastside program. I think I have spoken about this program in past council updates and in the most recent written update to council as part of the Environmental Stewardship Initiative Quarterly Update. We're really excited about this program. It is our signature program for supporting energy efficiency in residential properties in Bellevue and on the Eastside. We are right now focused on heat pumps and heating in homes because that is the largest energy source, but we're definitely, you know, interested in expanding the program over time, which is also why we called it Energy Smart Eastside. We definitely don't want to stop at heat pumps, but thought that was a great place to start. When we started work on this program, we, you know, were using the funding we had. Shortly thereafter, the bipartisan infrastructure law was passed, which includes a lot of great, excuse me, not the BIL, the Inflation Reduction Act was passed this past summer, which includes a lot of great incentives for people to install heat pumps and other energy efficiency measures. So we've been really evolving the program pretty rapidly over the past six months to share information about Inflation Reduction Act, tax credits and incentives. Those will all take effect next year. So kind of getting our residents ready for that. We have also been awarded a grant from Washington State University that will provide additional funding for incentives for residents, both for low-income and average-income residents to install energy-efficient heat pumps. Our focus really has been on lower-income households, both single-family and for multifamily properties, really looking at how we can leverage King County Housing Authority weatherization dollars to retrofit affordable housing properties in Bellevue. So working with them and have already started to look at some properties and are looking at sort of developing a bit of a pipeline of affordable housing, multifamily affordable housing properties. So yeah, certainly part of the program is to kind of grow our suite of incentives, but we definitely want to leverage the incentives that are out there. So the federal tax credits are available next year, and then there will be more incentives coming through the Inflation Reduction Act through a program the state will be setting up. So again, this space kind of continues to be evolving, so we kind of anticipate our program will grow and evolve over time as some of these additional funding sources come into play. And then we also, we've put in place a number of different partnerships or are working on those with a heat pump distributor. Spark Northwest is a nonprofit we're working with on the program. They have experience running these types of programs. We are working with KCHA, the weatherization team there, working with Imagine Housing because they have affordable housing properties in all five of our cities that we're looking to retrofit. We are looking to work with Hope Link, which is, you know, of course, one of our main human services providers that also has an energy program. So looking to leverage their expertise and contacts of residents who've needed energy assistance. We're looking at those folks as some of the people who could definitely benefit the most from this program. So yeah, that's kind of a quick overview. There's a lot more details behind it, but one of the other things the ILA will help us do is really kind of formalize our partnership to help us go after more grant funding. We're really excited about this WSU grant and are already, you know, continuing to look for more funding opportunities. And I think funders always want to see partnerships and collaborations and matches and that sort of thing, and so we bring all of that to the table, which is great. So just, yeah, quickly, some of the background. All five cities are part of the King County Cities Climate Collaboration, and we certainly don't want to, this to supplant our collaboration in the K-4C or take the place of it, anything like that. We're all five, you know, active members in that group, but also wanted to sort of collaborate more on the sort of program level through the Eastside Climate Partnership. We are also looking at how we can, you know, share some of our lessons learned with some of the other smaller cities in the K-4C. So, you know, are aware that, you know, some of our cities do have more funding, so definitely want to do what we can to help accelerate climate action in some of the other cities with some of our lessons learned and resources, or best practice guidance, I should say. And then, you know, the idea of this collaboration really came from some of the other collaborations we have on the Eastside, such as with Startup 425, Innovation Triangle. We do a lot of work with other Eastside cities on human services programming and contracting. And I think we've seen a lot of great success in those different areas. So we, you know, really looked at sort of how some of those partnerships were organized. Our partnership is similar, but not necessarily exactly the same, but we were definitely, you know, inspired by some of the work we've done there. And we've also worked in the past with the other Eastside cities on some different programs, like the Solar Ice Campaigns a number of years ago. We're also in collaboration with the Eastside cities. So yeah, to summarize, the interlocal agreement will really kind of help lay the foundation for the Energy Smart Eastside campaign now, but for really future collaboration on climate action with the five Eastside cities. So we're asking for a direction from council on next steps with the interlocal agreement. Thank you.
Okay, great. Let's start with a motion.
I'm going to direct staff to bring the Eastside Climate Partnership Interlocal Agreement back to council for adoption.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this? Okay, two council members on, followed by Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, thank you so much, Emile and Jennifer. I'm super excited about this because think that this is how we were able to take our resources, which we were able to increase on the budget, and leverage it even more. So when you talk about joint operating budget, cooperative contracting, what I hear is that we get more buying power and potentially we can do more with less over time, especially as we get other cities in. I just want to confirm a couple of things. One, I like the fact that we can expand to other cities, so I think I was clear on, I heard that. You talked about the, right now, it's the heat pump program as a current focus and the Energy Smart Eastside. When I read the ILA, it talks about the fact that the, this ILA is not only on the energy side. The way I read it is sustainability and climate change-related outreach coordination, funding and resources. Is that right? So it really is a whole potential umbrella of the environmental stewardship program elements within it that could also be part of this joint ILA with joint contracting and shared resources. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We wanted to set up the ILA to be kind of as broad as possible to cover our climate and sustainability work. You know, right now, the focus is on the Energy Smart Eastside, but we did want to lay the foundation so we could use this ILA for other, you know, programs in the future.
So it could be even related to recycling or other aspects of that? And then my other question is, at the state level, they do have the ESCO contracts that helps with really understanding energy usage. So do you see a program like this as one that also helps educate the cities within these programs and existing building owners about that potential program as well? So if there's already, I guess my point is, if there's already another contract that exists, this ILA could also educate us about what these resources are?
Yeah, potentially. I think, you know, we are, right now, we have one program that's really together, the Energy Smart Eastside. We also, you know, some of the cities have different budgets, and so we also have some sort of individual programs where there's some overlap. But yeah, this could allow us to have more shared contracts, and we're definitely kind of sharing information. So for instance, Bellevue started, we started our Clean Buildings Incentive Program first to support commercial buildings in complying with the Washington State Clean Buildings Act and also pursuing the early adopter incentives. Issaquah started up a similar program focused on Issaquah. Redmond is looking to start up a similar program. So for some things, we may move together. For others, you know, in this case, we, you know, based on sort of capacity and resources, have been kind of learning from each other, but a little bit separate.
Okay. And then, last question. In the budget, I think it said that we're going to hire this person that's going to be shared, and that in the other budgets, if they get approved, then they're going to be paying their fair share of that person's salary?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah. So, yeah, all the cities are on the same budgeting, their biennium budgeting timeframe. So I think every, all the other cities, I think, have all had their budget adopted, or it's going to be, you know, this week. So yeah, pending confirmation of their budgets, but it all looks promising.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is, this is not to dilute or replace or somehow affect our own ESI program, right? This is another way to enhance, to develop our environmental stewardship program by having this IRA with other cities. I mean, we are working collaboratively on some specific programs.
Yep.
Okay, so it doesn't detract from what we are doing.
Yep.
Okay, so it's in addition.
Yes.
I hope it's in addition. Okay. So from that perspective, I think it's, I appreciate this. It's good. Because we know that, you know, environmental climate change is getting to be real and real, more and more real. And so it's no longer just deferred. So I think we've heard people wanting to have more programs. And so we've heard some comments today from the audience. Are they, the question they ask, are they relevant to what we're doing with IRA? Or are we doing those things they are requesting, our own, you know, smart city programs anyway? What's the question? They say they want a heat pump, right? They believe, and I kind of agree with them in some way, because the heat pump program, as spelled out in the IRA with the other cities, we will work with maybe just affordable housing, just with a limited implementation. What I think, but what I heard from the public is, we really need to encourage the overall public to do more of that, because this makes a lot bigger, big impact, right, to the community?
Yeah.
So what's the answer? Are we doing that anyway? Or are we doing this and not doing the other heat pump for the general community?
Yeah, we're doing both. So we set up the program initially with education and outreach for everyone.
Right.
And then, you know, allocated some funding to low-income heat pump installations. And then we, you know, received the grant pretty soon after getting the program started. So that will allow, so it's taken a little while to get the grant agreement in place, but that will allow for additional incentives for more moderate or average-income households. So we're looking to do both. I think, you know, we want to support both, you know, really all residents, but recognize, you know, lower-income residents are going to need more assistance.
So we're doing parallel tracks?
Yeah.
Okay. My question is, would one kind of distract from the other? You know, I mean, do you have the resources to say we can do both? Or if we're doing this, well, maybe we can let the other slide? What's your answer?
Well, we're definitely excited to, yeah, have more capacity to work on this, because right now, we have, you know, five staff people from the different cities.
Right.
Leading it all up. But yeah, no, I don't, I don't think one will necessarily detract from the other. I think there's opportunities for both.
Hopefully, each can help the other.
Yeah.
Hopefully, the IRA we're looking at can help the whole city of Bellevue as well.
Yeah.
My second question is, you know, I mentioned when we talk about our own ESI program. I asked about solar panel and solar water heating, you know? That's not part of the IRA, right? We don't have that specifically.
Well, the ILA is kind of broad enough to allow us to collaborate on, like, a solar campaign or that sort of thing. So, yeah, that's definitely.
You mentioned specifically, you mentioned heat pump.
Yep.
But do you think you might include solar panel, solar water heat as part of your IRA specifically, or you don't think it's necessary?
I don't know that it's necessary. I think we definitely wrote it up to, you know, cover any sort of energy efficiency or renewable energy types of projects. And I think as we look, are starting to look at what's next, you know, solar is definitely on the short list, so.
So it's in there?
Yeah.
So I don't have to worry about not doing our city's ESI program? The city is doing solar as well?
Yeah, or well, as we bring on more resources, yeah.
As we do our own thing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I appreciate, I'll put on the green. No, I think this is very exciting. It's, you know, it's not something we're jumping into new. We've been doing things like Arch and Innovation Triangle, K-4C, which is larger, King County Housing Authority, you know, King County Homeless Authority. The, all of these problems or challenges are not within our boundaries. We don't have little, you know, artificial things that say, we only have this in this city. So we're working together, and we found that. Collaboration and acting in innovation ways and learning from each other is a very powerful way to get it done, because the problems are regional, they're, you know, they're national or worldwide, but we're attacking it from this area. And we all are living together and working together. And then we also can do separate actions. We can do things that we do that are maybe just universal to us, and we have, Kirkland is doing some things different now that we're probably working to catch up with, and same thing with Redmond. But as this is set up, obviously, the city of Bellevue is a larger city, more resources, bigger, and all this. And we're in a leadership role, which is really good. And I think Councilmember Lee's questions are very good in terms of how does this affect work we're doing. And I think the answer is that, one is we have oversight, and secondly, that we're all working together on it. And if we have something that's innovative, we can work with the other cities, or if they come up with something, we'll learn more. And we, again, these artificial boundaries don't, you know, keep the more heat here and not over here. So it's really a very good step, positive step forward to actually get things done, because we can't do it all by ourselves. And it sounds like you've really set this up in a very good way to make sure that it works. That's the biggest problem in working, you know, with different groups of people, is you don't have a structure that makes it work. But I think this is, we've learned a lot from the years of having things set up and not work well. So I'm very pleased with it. I think it's a great step forward, and you will, you know, we'll get reports from time to time. We can get involved in this. Again, I think it's just another example of Bellevue stepping forward and leading, and also leading in a very positive and collaborative and cohesive action. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor, do you have any comments, questions?
Thank you. Great job, Jennifer and Emile. Thank you so much for bringing this forward, very supportive of this as we move forward, and agree with my, with my colleagues for all the same reasons, more or less. But I just love, whenever I see in a presentation taking advantage of leveraging economies of scale, it's a good day. And deepening that collaboration with our, with our fellow cities here on the Eastside, and then sharing that leadership, sharing that knowledge, as Councilmember Stokes mentioned, and then preparing us for grant funding in the, in the future is a great step forward. My only question, and I like the focus on the heat pumps, so I'm kind of wondering, is that going to be kind of the key metric in terms of how we're tracking the success of this? How many heat pumps do you think we might be able to get installed and across, like, what kind of, you know, be it residents, be it the nonprofits, or some of the other groups, or they mentioned there? But what else is going into that as you continue to track and come back to us, hopefully with an update on the, on the success of the program?
Yeah, yeah. So I think, you know, certainly number of heat pump installations, you know, anticipated energy savings, greenhouse gas emissions reductions, and then, you know, the other one for us is dollars leveraged. So I think we really want to look at, you know, what are we using for? So I think we really want to look at, you know, what are we using for city contributions and what external funding are we able to leverage through this program?
Okay, great. And then, and then what will outreach look like? And will you come, because I know we're just talking about signing this, this IRA at this point, but are you gonna have, uh, website, other materials that we can point residents in the community to if they have an interest in taking advantage of such a program or want to get involved? Where, where, where do we point them to?
Yeah, so we have a, a website, um, energiesmarteastside.org. Um, we've been doing webinars and, you know, kind of using all of our normal city channels to promote those. I think what we're looking at doing, uh, really starting in the new year as we, you know, have the, the grant agreement in place and more funding to work with, is starting more kind of targeted outreach to our, um, low and moderate income residents through, you know, for instance, our, um, home repair program, through our, our partners at Hope Link, you know, kind of working through the appropriate channels. But yeah, really looking to do more kind of targeted outreach and then also, you know, wanting to look at, um, just who we're engaging with to making, make sure that, you know, the participants in the program really reflect the demographics of our city. So I, I think we'll definitely be looking at, at broadening our outreach as well.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
So that was one of my questions was the outreach that you were going to do and the education for residents. But you know, the whole reason we're doing this is we're trying to meet our greenhouse gas emission goals of decreasing it by half by 2050 from, what was the starting year? Two thousand seventeen?
Twenty eleven.
Twenty eleven. Okay. So how are we going to measure success? I was at a tech conference a couple of weeks ago and met somebody who had a way of measuring greenhouse gas emissions like at intersections. And I wonder, can we do something tangible like that? Or how, how will we measure our success if we're reaching our goals?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, for something like this, um, it tends to be, you know, you can kind of estimate what the greenhouse gas emissions reduction would be. You know, you normally say if you have a natural gas furnace and you switch to an electric heat pump, you can, um, estimate what the greenhouse gas emission savings would be. And then, um, you could, we'll also, you know, when we get the data from PSE on the total energy use per year, you know, that's where we'll ultimately start to see the impact. And then we can, you know, do the calculations to look at, um, greenhouse gas emissions.
Yeah, I'd, I'd sure like something a little more accurate for our city. If it's possible, I gave you the link of that company. Maybe we could look into it. I don't know. And I mean, the fact is, it's not just about energy consumption. It's also about lifestyle habits and, and how many people start walking more and, and living closer to where they work and things like that. So I'd really like to see if it's possible to get a little more accurate measurement of our city and the other cities in, as well. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, um, all those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Great. All right, we're on to our last study session item and then after that, we will open it up further for, um, public comments if there's somebody there. So Mr. Miyake, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, the, uh, next item is an update on the airfield master, airfield park master plan. Uh, tonight's presentation is informational whereby we're seeking council comments and feedback. Formal council, uh, action direction will occur later in the future. By way of background, this particular topic was last in front of you on October of two thousand twenty-one. At that time, council directed park staff to prepare an update, uh, to the twelve, twenty twelve Bellevue airfield master plan and more specifically seek and understand community preferences and feedback associated with locating a new aquatic center on site. Tonight's staff will share some of that feedback and outreach, um, information with you. Um, joining us this evening for the presentation is Michael Shiasaki, who is the director and Pam Furman, planning and design and development manager, um, both from the Parks and Community Services. Also, I just wanted to note it in, um, the audience tonight is Dave Hamilton, the chair of the park board. But that'll give to you, Michael.
Great. Thank you, city manager Miyake. And, uh, good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House and members of the city council. Pam and I are so happy to be here this evening. And, um, you know, I, I think this is a bit of a mid-process report on the, uh, master plan update process for Bellevue Airfield Park. So as the city manager just noted, and I will, there we go, um, uh, just say that yes, this is for information only. We're not here for any kind of decision or direction this evening, um, but we are to, here to seek your feedback on the master plan alternatives that Pam will be, uh, going through with you. And, um, and that feedback we receive will go back into the overall process in coming up with a preferred master plan alternative. And we will be working with the park board to bring back that recommendation to you, um, sometime next winter. So with that, I will just quickly go through, through the agenda. So we'll provide a bit of background on the, uh, the site and the previous master plan that, uh, was completed in two thousand twelve. Talk about what's in the Parks and Open Space System Plan that's relevant to this master plan process. Um, we will talk about the community outreach, uh, done so far and what we've heard from the community. And then we'll go through the three master plan alternatives and seek your feedback, followed by next steps. So with that, I will turn it over to Pam Furman.
Thank you, Michael. So what you're looking at on this next slide is a twenty-seven acre Bellevue Airfield Park. It's located a quarter mile east of, along a pedestrian path east of Robinswood Park and north of I-90 in the East Gate area. In twen- in two thousand two, recognizing that Bellevue Airfield Park site may represent the last opportunity to acquire a large undeveloped, relatively flat property in Bellevue, the council authorized the purchase of the property for the purpose of developing active recreation. Today, the Bellevue Airfield Park is currently, it's currently undeveloped. And the next slide. The site is well-located to support active recreation. It's located, as I mentioned, right off I-90 and surrounded by residential neighbors on the north and west, but an office park indicated on, at, in the purple on the map before you in an office park to the east, south and west. A well-established forest buffer, north and west buffers residence. Vehicular access is from the south along a hundred and sixtieth from I-90, while pedestrian trail access from the north residential area and the we- and the west, Robinswood, allows for pedestrian access. Significant to the development considerations are the historical operations of the Bellevue Airfield, and that was operated until nineteen eighty-three, and a municipal landfill that operated from nineteen fifty-one to nineteen sixty-four. From a development perspective, the site is full of utility system easements abandoned and operational, such as landfill gas, my, um, migration system, groundwater monitoring wells, stormwater systems, and a major King County metro line, among others. The next one shows you a couple photos of the property. The forested areas, open meadow over the landfill and well-established trails. There's also a two-acre, um, utility site, um, operated stormwater pond, the photo in the center right of the screen. And the next slide. The original master planning process started in May two thousand eight. There was significant participation in this planning process from nearby residents and several interest groups. Most participants in the planning process supported one of four major development options, that of an off-leash facility, a Little League field complex, an aquatic or major indoor sport facility, and a passive-use meadow. The Parks and Community Services Board recommended a preferred master plan, what you see before you, and the name Bellevue Airfield Park. The city council concurred and adopted the master plan in two thousand twelve. As currently adopted, the Bellevue Airfield Park master plan would provide the community with two lighted synthetic turf sport fields, a wooded picnic area, trail connections, playgrounds, restrooms and parking. The plan also maintains a healthy woodland buffer between the park and nearby residents. Recognizing the predominant use of the undeveloped site, both then and today, as an off-leash facility, it also includes the future expansion of the off-leash area at Robinswood that would grow that one-point-seven acre site to about five-point-seven-five acres. And the next slide. Last spring, as you will recall, council adopted the updated Park and Open Space System Plan, and that plan system identifies needs and community development preferences. On the slide before you, are the top-ranked community preferences and park system development goals on a citywide statistically valid survey performed for the Park and Open Space System Plan. Those top preferences are trails, beach waterfront parks, unstructured play and picnic areas, parks with display gardens, outdoor sport fields, swimming pool and indoor facilities. As mentioned, the site provides a city-only, city-owned, flat, large, undeveloped property site, large enough to provide aquatic facility and/or sport fields. That's all right. During the Parks and Open Space Plan update, um, the, what we have both during the park plan update and our outreach for Bellevue Airfield Park Master Plan update, we have consistently received numerous requests to add pickleball courts. To help address those recent requests for pickleball, the city has committed to add pickleball lines to existing city tennis courts when they are renovated, if sufficient distance exists between residents, be- between residents and I should say the sport court. We can fit approximately two pickleball courts per tennis court. And so as you can see on the slide, we currently offer the public seventeen pickleball courts. And by the end of two thousand twenty-three, we will be adding an additional twelve more pickleball court play opportunities. As the city currently has thirty-seven tennis courts in the Park and Open Space System, um, we should be able to continue increasing that number of pickleball court availability within the city. I should also note that we currently also offer pickleball, um, play opportunities at most of our indoor facilities. And the next slide is the need for aquatic facility development has been informed by feasibility studies in two thousand nine, twenty twenty, and in two thousand twenty-one, as well as a King County twenty nineteen regional aquatic report. The population of the east side communities has more than doubled in the last fifty years. No new public pools have been built within Bellevue, Redmond or Kirkland during that time. There are nearly half a million people living within the east side service area and there is continued population growth anticipated. The only existing public aquatic facility in Bellevue, the Bellevue Aquatic Facility, is over fifty years old and the Bellevue Aquatic Facility has served Bellevue's population of sixty thousand in nineteen seventy, when it was built, to over a hundred and fifty thousand today. Its age, capacity and inability to provide a full range of aquatic programming make it inadequate to meet the current and future demand of swimming facilities in Bellevue. And the next slide, if you would. Thank you. Recognizing the aquatic needs, in two thousand twenty-one, the council directed an update to the existing Bellevue Airfield Park Master Plan to understand community preferences and inform impacts associated with locating an aquatic facility at Bellevue Airfield Park Site. The Bellevue Airfield Park Site is the only undeveloped city-owned site large enough to accommodate the preferred aquatic facility. Additional elements recommending the aquatic facility at this site are easy access off of I-90, existing shared parking agreements with owners of the surrounding office park, the site size that would allow for an aquatic facility and complimentary outdoor park uses. An overview of the council's preferred a hundred and thirty square foot aquatic facility concept would provide, as you can see on the screen, recreation pool, warm water therapy, competition, deep water dive, fitness facilities, class meeting and event space. And the next slide. We have had several community gatherings to help inform the Bellevue Airfield Park Master Plan. After our June project kickoff meeting with the Parks and Community Services Board, we had a site walk with interested neighbors in June to listen to those that will be most impacted by the development of the park. Approximately thirty-five neighbors attended. Two community meetings followed in July and September. July was a virtual online meeting where we had about sixty to seventy attendees and September twenty-second, we had in-person meeting at South Bellevue Community Center where approximately eighty-two community members joined us. Our mailing list has grown to over twenty-five hundred. Our email notification of meeting and website updates is well over three thousand. We've responded to over, what, five hundred emails and phone calls. Invitations and project information has been sent to a variety of community groups, including agencies and organizations of color, faith-based groups and family-related agencies, Youth Link, Network on Aging, as well as our sport field user groups, aquatic center contacts and our aquatic fundraising partner. Splash forward. And the next slide is, and what have we heard? Based on information obtained, um, from community meetings, correspondence and master plan survey responses, a few themes and master plan alternatives have evolved. Community-based input says this park should be inclusive, safe, environmentally responsive and active. And when asked at our master plan update meeting and website survey, which passive programs were most desired, about a hundred and twenty people have responded thus far indicating preferences for trails and picnic areas. And when asked which active programs were most desired, an aquatic facility, playground and sport courts were favored. And the next is the activity diagram shared at the meeting provided an opportunity to take a big picture look at potential site development alternatives. The diagram shows more natural passive areas in dark green, more active areas in light green, parking in gray and potential aquatic facility locations in light blue. Responding to community and immediate neighborhood concerns regarding preservation of the natural areas, access and potential impacts to residential areas in the north and northwest area of that, of our site, further evaluation of locating active park elements in the northwest area of the site was not pursued. Based on community fa- feedback, three master plan alternatives were developed and I will share those with you. Alternative one, um, has the aquatic center. This is approximate size, reasonably, um, scaled to site in the southwest corner of the site. There's also the picnic areas in the northwest, restrooms, pickleball courts, amphitheater. It retains the sport field of the original master plan. There's a splash pad in here, playground and picnic area. I think I already said picnic area, didn't I? There's multiple picnic areas. Alternative two, um, essentially moves the aquatic center to the southeast area of the site and rather than having a sport field, add, um, it adds pickleball courts and/or, I should say, sport courts. I don't think we've refined it to how many pickleball courts or how many, uh, what type of sport courts yet. Yet another alternative was presented that has no aquatic facility and slightly modifies the existing master plan to add, uh, sport courts in lieu of one of the sport fields. And the next slide, at our most recent in-person South Bellevue Community Center meeting, the community was asked what most frequently, what they, let's see. was most frequently cited comments were for pickleball. We can't hear enough about pickleball. The next most frequent comment was absolutely support for an aquatic facility. Not as numerous, however, consistent were comments citing concerns of loss of trees, habitat in open space, and potential impacts of increased nefarious activities in that northwest corner. And in the beginning of November, we received a petition from 20 park-adjacent neighbors requesting that no development occur in that 10-acre northwest portion of the site. When asked which alternative, I should share, I should share that when asked which alternative was preferred, we came up with a three-way tie between all three. So I can't offer much more specificity, but yes, that word.
That specificity?
Yes, that's it. Thank you, Michael. And let's go with the project next steps, next slide. Here we are on December 5th, and based on your feedback this evening, we'll be updating the master plan alternatives, and we'll be meeting with the community in January to further hone master plan alternatives and understand preferences. Shortly thereafter, we'll be returning to the park board, seeking a master plan recommendation. We'll revisit the city council for your final input and direction to proceed with our environmental permitting per the State Environmental Policy Act. Environmental review will continue to include community outreach and is expected to take six, nine months, nine months to a year to complete. After environmental permitting is complete, we will return to council seeking adoption of the master plan. And with that.
So once again, we're here for information only, but we're seeking your feedback on those master plan alternatives. And that feedback we receive goes back into the process as we work the, work with the park board to develop a preferred, a single preferred master plan alternative that will move forward.
So you don't necessarily want to know which one we like best, but you're looking for what amenities are we seeking in the master plan?
Absolutely, that would be right, yes.
Okay, sounds good.
And I can flip back to those alternatives or whatever you'd like to.
Okay, do you have a picture of the three on one page? We do in our packet.
Okay.
I don't think you do.
I don't think we do.
We do not in the PowerPoint. In your packet, yes.
Councilmember Stokes, aren't you the liaison to the Parks Board?
That's correct.
Let's have you start.
All right, I think this is very exciting. Actually, the mayor and I have been on this journey also since 2008, '09, all the way through. And it's been very, very, very interesting. There's a lot of things in this that are consistent all the way along. A lot of it is keeping the trails, keeping the forest, wanting to have active areas. And, you know, aquatic, all these other centers have been included in that. At that time, we were looking for more baseball, other fields. But again, it's, it hasn't varied a whole lot from that original thing. And I think that we have three really good areas here. But one of them really, well, show me the three, the alternate one is the one with aquatic center that way. Aquatic center there, and the third one doesn't have aquatic center.
Correct.
So just at the beginning, I want to ask you, how can we say that each of these three are equally liked by different, you know, you have three different groups, when an aquatic center is one of the top active things that people talk about? I mean, it seems to me that alternative three is, I don't, I don't understand why it's rated equally with the other two. Just, I mean, you know, I'd like to know that because I think it helps. I, I think that's not what we've been talking about, but how did we get to that?
And, and I'm guesstimating that in part it's that there are two alternatives that show an aquatic center.
Right.
So one and two, and kind of splits the vote for an aquatic center if you might look at it that way.
Okay, well, that's what I was thinking too. I think that it, it doesn't, it doesn't really make sense to say that. I mean, that, that is, doesn't really prove anything because you've got two-thirds of the people basically saying, we want a site with aquatic center. And then one-third doesn't want aquatic center, wants another sports field. And I think that's what, that's what I gathered at the meetings, and I guess it's what we've been talking about for a long time. And, and, you know, as we've said, there is, there is a really dire need for a really first-class, great aquatic center for double population. And the interest and the development of other areas in these other pieces here, and we can put pickleball, a lot of other things in there. And I think putting that, putting that now is, is really the thing that seems to me that most of the community really understands and wants to have that happen. If we don't do it now, we'll never do it. There's not a place for it and all that. And I just, just want to make sure we don't get it kind of mixed up as if the wanting a pick, the aquatic center and a picnic area, well, not necessarily a picnic area, but preserving that northeast, northwest side up there in various ways. And that's, that's a good discussion about that, but it's very important in terms of the community. So I think, and I think we've done a really good job, the staff and people putting together in parsing that out so that we really do provide a lot of what people like right now. And we look at the number one thing that people talk about, they want in all of Bellevue in terms of recreation and things in the parks, they want trails, okay? So, you know, aquatic centers down there, there's a lot of other things, but mostly the passive parts. And we can accomplish that desire and do both of those at the same time. I mean, that's, that's a pretty rare thing to be able to do. We can do the very passive pieces in a very good way, and we can address the issues of safety in this area. I don't think that, that's, that's something we can do, and it's where, it's, will not necessarily change a lot from it is now, and it's fairly safe out there now. And I think we can have the other elements that we want to put in, into this and all, for all the reasons that has, have been talked about. And, and going to those meetings and listening to people, it was kind of interesting, it was almost the, hey, you know, aquatic center is really great, we like these things. What we really want to talk about is how many pickleball courts can we get put in there? I mean, reality is that, I think, my feeling is that the people who came to these meetings, hey, we're going to have an aquatic center here, that's great. So what are we going to do with all these other pieces? They even talked about, why can't you on this third one, or alternative two, why can't you put pickleball courts on top of the aquatic center? So for me, I think we're after, gosh, how many years? We're getting to a point of no return, in a sense, in terms of, are, is Bellevue and, and the area going to have a really first-class aquatic center that a lot of small cities out in the mid-part of the state, of the country have put together for much smaller cities and much more, much less urban cities than Bellevue? And we have an aquatic center now that is, is small, out of date, but it can be used for, it can be a, one that really helps with this aquatic center, the big center, but have certain things there. So we can, we can end up with a really fantastic, really good, very positive addition to Bellevue and its, its, this whole way of life, or not. And I think we're at that point where we have an, and I, I personally think the, the third one, moving it around down here is, is good. But I think we're, we're at the place now, we need to make a decision, let's do it. Because we keep talking about over and over again, I don't want to see another 10 years, and we, we still haven't done it. So I think the time is now. The, we got the, the levy, and part of that was, was with the, for the aquatic center. And we have a huge number of people supporting it. But we're also doing really great things in terms of the other pieces of this. So I, I think it's, we're, we're really doing this in a first-class way, and we just need to step up and say, let's do it. And I'm, I'm ready to do that.
I think he's saying he likes options one and two better than three.
Okay.
We tried to read between the lines, yes.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, weren't you on the Parks Board?
I was, as you were.
That's true.
Yes. Well, very excited, first of all, the pickleball courts. And that we're going to have 12 additional next year, because I keep challenging the city manager, and every time I challenge him, he says, they're all booked up, they're all full. So hopefully he won't have that excuse much longer. I, I, I agree with Councilmember Stokes. I think, hey, just looking at the, the pure, yeah, they were tied all three. But if, 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 if two, which both have the aquatic center, I think we can reasonably say that two-thirds are in favor of having that aquatic center. And we've heard time and time again, the importance of an aquatics facility in the city of Bellevue. So for me, that is paramount. Just, I, I kind of lean towards number one, just because it's a little bit, keeping some of that master plan in place, having that one sports field. And we do have a really strong need for sports fields still in our, in our community, especially all those young boys and girls watching World Cup soccer right now that want to be on that field. So, you know, I think that's still very important, and, and another need in our community as an active sport. So, so, yeah, for me, alternative one is clearly the, 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 the best path forward for me, my opinion. But I, I really appreciate all the work that you've done on this. I really appreciate the amount of community outreach that you've done. Thank you for recapping that in your presentation. I'm curious what we're hoping to learn from that third meeting coming up. Are we trying to drill down a little bit more on what alternative, that, you know, what direction we're going in? Are we going to try and get more specific answers or address concerns? Like tonight, we've heard some concerns about safety and, and positioning of those picnic tables. So we, we've heard some, some concerns there, and certainly we'd like to hear more about that and how we can adjust any plans. I think that's all very manageable in terms of where we place it, safety concerns, et cetera. But I would love to hear thoughts on what that next community outreach looks like.
We will absolutely be honing the master plan alternatives. That will include both the park elements, and to the degree that the picnic area, for instance, is developed, is there vehicle access there, is it just trails? As well as what, I think I said, the other sport field options and/or park elements, such as playgrounds, picnic tables, sport courts, what are those? We'll be, we'll be honing those down. You're absolutely right. We heard two-thirds support for an aquatic facility. So at least one of those alternatives will be dropping out, and we'll be refining the master plan alternatives.
Okay, okay, good. And I'd really just implore you to please concerted effort to reach out to those residents closest to the Airfield Park, to make sure that their voice is being heard here and their concerns are being heard, since they will be impacted based on, and hopefully, obviously, they should be enjoying this park as much as everybody else, but potentially they could be impacted more than others throughout the city. So I really want to make sure we hear their voice before you come back to us with the direction you want to go in.
Yeah, absolutely. Now, I, I'd just like to add that, you know, I think part of this is about balance. I think this is really a wonderful site in that, you know, part of it is forested, the other part is open. One is, you know, has a single-family residential against it. The other side has an office park. It really, this is really an ideal site for this kind of development. But getting back to the balance piece, I think as we look at maintaining forest canopy, obviously a huge priority, I think we're also looking at adding those some activities. Because if you add positive activities, you tend to then not have the less desirable ones. And so I think having access and activities does help with some of the safety concerns. So we will be looking at balance when we're definitely hearing what the neighbors have to say on that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Councilmembers on, weren't you a council liaison to the Parks Board?
Yes. Seems like there's a pattern here. Seems like there's a pattern here. Well, Pam and Michael, and David as well, I appreciate getting us to this point because I think we were actually, I was on the Parks Board as we were updating that plan and hearing from a lot of people. And so I guess I will just start with the, it's time. We've been talking about this for quite some time. It is time. And then the second thing I was reflecting on is perhaps the reason it's a three-way tie is because with the growth that we've had in the city, we need more of all of this. So when we ask people what they want, I would interpret the three-way tie as saying, hey, ultimately, this is all important, and we need to think about how we actually get to these pieces within the Parks and Open Space Plan and the efforts that we have. And thankfully, the voters agreed to a very modest increase to help with some of the funding. And so when I think about this, we as a council made a commitment, and we actually looked at different sites, and we agreed that the aquatic center, this was the best location for that site, for the aquatics. And so having the aquatics and the sports field. So as I think about the three alternatives, I would also have our colleagues consider whether we take the third one off the table like Councilmember Stokes recommended. And then with that said, I will say that, taking that broader view than citywide to say, where are those other places for active and passive activities? We didn't talk about it tonight, but I saw on there, dog park, off-leash dog park. And certainly when I was on the Parks Board, it was talked about a lot that although we now have one that is up in the Newport Hills neighborhood and one in Robinswood, it does not nearly account for the needs of so many dogs in our city. So I guess I would just say that as we move forward, recognizing the three-way tie and the importance of these other things that the communities clearly said they want, we also want to move faster on what about citing some, another place for, say, a dog park? Thanks.
And I would say, as in the previous approved master plan, it, it, it made the recommendation to add that off-leash capacity at Robinswood, which is a quarter mile away, and that's something we can certainly plan on adding into this master plan too.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. That way, if people feel like they're being heard, because that was one of the items in the priority. And if they look at alternative one and two, they may feel as though their voice isn't being heard. Thanks.
Okay, since I was on the Parks Board, I was the chair of the Parks Board, I'm going to go next. I first want to thank you and Chair Dave Hamilton, thank you for being here tonight and for all your leadership on the Parks Board. That's just been wonderful. I definitely would like the aquatic center options versus the non, so I, I say no to three. I have a few comments and questions. One, is there any environmentally sustainable way to heat that pool? I hope that we can look outside the box, see what they're doing in Denmark, and see if we can capture any of their innovative ways to do that. Three, when, when we were on the Parks Board, Councilmember Stokes and I, there was this big grassy meadow, and everybody wanted to maintain the grassy meadow. And that's where they wanted the picnic area. They didn't want it in the forest. They wanted it in the, in the grassy meadow. And when I look at this picture, I always see are trees. So have we kind of like treed up the grassy meadow? Or should we maintain some of the grass and put the picnic tables in that area? I know that there's kind of like a peak of the meadow where people really wanted to have the picnic tables. So, and I think it's, it's closer to the little parking area maybe or something.
Yes, it, yes, it is. It's, it's, the meadow is currently directly over the landfill area. And I don't know that there was necessarily ever a picnic area planned on that. But as you can see, with the large size of the aquatic facility and the parking necessary, additional parking necessary to support aquatics, it does not leave much of a meadow.
Right. Well, I think where that purple parking area is, the 53 spaces, is kind of the meadow area they were talking about at the time. And there definitely was a lot of input on wanting benches and picnic tables in that area. So just something to, to think about. In the pool, with the programming, I know we're not talking programming, but when I look at the opportunity for a family to have one kid playing soccer and another look at the opportunity for a family to have one kid playing soccer and another one at the pool, but one parent, will there be kind of daycare programming at the pool, where you could drop a kid off and know that they're gonna be safe and in some kind of a swim camp or something? I know when my kids were in daycare, they would go to the pool.
That is part of the concept, the aquatic facility concept, is that there would be some kind of opportunity to have care, childcare.
Okay, great. And then, the last comment is the amphitheater. We tend to put that in places that are steep and we can't really do anything else with, but I don't ever see them used. So maybe we could put some picnic tables there, too.
Picnic tables are pretty easily located, so, yeah.
Yeah.
We can tear us.
Yeah, okay. That's my feedback. So Councilmember Lear, Barksdale, who's closest to the Parks Board? Go ahead.
Thank you. And I do like alternative one, because it keeps the most amenities. The only thing I think missing between the three alternatives and alternative one is the basketball courts. And I was curious about why we wouldn't be able to fit a basketball court. And what I'm thinking about, in addition to residents, I mean—so I actually used to work at the—in the Avanta campus when I was working at Microsoft, and I used to walk in this—in this space. And so I know employees will also use this space, the open field, the aquatic center, the trails and so forth. And so I guess I was just curious, just given the space or the size of a basketball court, why that was removed. I'll go through my comments and then leave it to you. So I do appreciate keeping the forestry as well. One thing I didn't necessarily see was seating along the trail. I think that would be really nice to add along any of the trails. And then also, any sort of—if there's any way to build in activities along the trail, I'm thinking, like, exercise equipment, different pull-up chin-up bars, whatever, like setups, whatever, right, that type of deal. And then art. So are there any plans to include or incorporate art throughout the park space? Thank you.
Well, I can respond to missing. There actually is basketball courts, I think, in every single one of these. It's just so small, because we're at such a big picture of 27 acres, you can't see it, and it's not labeled.
Yeah, I didn't see the label. So where is it? Sorry, just—
In this particular one, if you look to the west—
Yep.
No, sorry. Yes, to the west, right underneath the restrooms and next to the pickleball.
Okay.
Would be what would be a basketball court.
Okay.
As an example. But those are exactly the types of park elements that we'll be looking to refine with the community, work with the community to see what's there. And you're absolutely right. The helipad that currently exists out on site has a basketball court that's been pushed out—or a basketball hoop that's been pushed out—that's still there, and people will go out and use that. And we had not necessarily gotten to the level of art included along the trails, and certainly, to some extent, that will involve available funding. And—but we would love to work with the Art Commission and get art in the park always, exercise along the trails. That has come really back into popularity. It had waned for many years, but it has absolutely come back, and we're looking for opportunities to include a spread-out exercise opportunities in the park. So we'll be—we'll definitely be looking at that.
Thank you. And seating?
Benches.
Yes.
Always.
Okay.
Always.
I second the arts idea. I think—we're—a lot of us are really interested in that. Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Well, I've been around long enough. I believe I probably serve on every one of the boards and commissions. And I also remember, perhaps, when this was discussed, you know, 10, 12 years ago. I was deputy mayor and mayor at the time. And at that time, you know, there was certain criteria, certain thinking, certain culture, certain needs, that was decided that this is a great, great place, you know, as you articulated, to be reserved for a particular purpose, you know, 10 years ago. Things have changed, obviously. You know, that's why we, as council member, we sit on the council. We represent the public, the community, and the community have changed. So we need to be updating our thinking, as you are doing. So I believe you've done a great job, and that's why you come out with a real good presentation, real good community meeting outreach. I was at the September outreach. I was floored to see how many people were there. And I heard, you know, different opinions, obviously, you know. Aquatic center, yes, we support. And surprisingly, paddleball, you know, I'm sure 10 years ago, we—nobody probably talked about paddleball, even though I knew about paddleball. Joel Pritchard developed, you know, our lieutenant governor and, you know, congressman to Washington, D.C. But today's different, you know. And then, there are also long-term community folks that have been here for a long time, you know, and they were here when we developed this airfield park. And they have their own concept, likings, preferences, what should go in there. I think we try to maintain all that, I think, based on what we have. And I think you heard it all, really, very, very well presented. And that perspective is, they want to preserve, you know, the trees, preserve the natural area, passive area. You know, they also are concerned, because of the development in the city, development creates runoff, pollution, oil draining down right toward Phantom Lake, right? So the more development you have, the more—the more danger there is, the more concern we have. Okay. And I think we need to know that, so that we can prepare—we can mitigate those things. It's important, because 20 years later, we may find out, wow, gee, what's happened. We did something, right? And the people who are there who—so I also appreciate you giving us the opportunity to tell you what I personally prefer, each of us, so that we can vote for it. You know, I don't believe that this is, for me, appropriate. I have my preferences, but I think I want to sort out what the community wants, as you presented the dilemma, you know, three alternatives. And we're discussing—I appreciate Councilmember Stokes brought up, you know, just what is it? We really need to understand better. And so I think that's—the next step I like to do is present—you know, the reason why I think we all try to speculate, why do we have two alternatives, and how come three of them are tied, but two of them differ from one of them? So I think we need to explain better, okay? It doesn't mean that the people don't like aquatic center, no. I think we all believe aquatic center is a good thing. We all support it, council approved it. Nobody says no. But it's only when you put in this specific site, where you have your conversation with them, there's something missing, okay? So I like to make sure, you know, that we understand that clearly. And we also address—if there's any concern we need to address, we need to do that. So we would have a very clear consensus support that it is something we want to do. And I believe—we believe that, I believe that. But I'm not going to guess that's what the public who voted and left out aquatic center, you know, understand what we're talking about. So I think that needs to be clarified. But—and I think if we do that, they will—we can get much better understanding. It's a lot easier for us to make the choices, not because—when that happens, you know, I would tell you what I like to see. I like to see, you know, something, maybe a portrait of the current mayor to be included in somewhere. I'm just joking, jesting. She doesn't want that for sure.
He's brown-nosing.
But that's the point I'm saying. But the point is that we will have a real design, real concept that represent, you know, the majority of the resident citizens of the city of Bellevue. And I believe aquatic center will be part of that, okay? But I'm not going to second-guess it, or just, you know, you guys, we're missing something. And so in rough—in preference, if I look at all three, I kind of agree that alternative one is probably the most. But still, after talking to folks, really understanding, we always ask for outreach, outreach, and I believe that we are—you're doing a good job. We're getting there. Let's close the gap, making sure that we do have the consensual feedback. Then we don't need to be second-guessing, you know. Then we can have our own final say as to what we would like to, you know, see included in the approval.
Okay, great feedback. Councilmember Stokes, you said you had one more thing to add.
Yeah. And I appreciate all the comments, and we can zero in on this. I think we're in a good spot. I did—I meant to do this, and I wanted to—we've, you know, we've pointed out Dave Hamilton as the chair, but the Parks Board as a whole just did a fantastic job on this. And the people who came down and talked to us have been very good, too. So I think we're ready to go on this, and I think, you know, alternative one is gaining some interest, meeting kind of along around, you know, kind of both, in a sense, both one and two. So anyhow, I think we're in a good place to go, and let's just do it.
Okay, you got our feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For coming tonight. And thank you again, Chair Hamilton, for being here and for all your good work. Okay, we have a chance to do further oral communications. Do we have anybody else signed up?
Yes. The next speaker that would be speaking is Lynn Mathis.
Okay.
All right. The next speaker is Sally Lawrence.
Hello, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House, and City Council members. I'm Sally Lawrence, Chair of the Steering Committee for Save Coal Creek. Thank you for listening to me once again, and these are my fellow Save Coal Creek folks. What you're seeing here is a scroll of our petition signers, 4,900 people since January 2020 have been signing our online petition. And we occasionally go to Redtown Trailhead and get paper signatures as well. So you can't see from here. I will somehow render something available to you, but that's what 4,900 names looks like. So when we ask people to sign the petition, we get their name, their signature, their zip code, and their email address. We took the email addresses off for privacy reasons. But that's a lot of signatures, and I think the scroll is about 16 feet long. So I wanted to tell you just a little bit about the people that have signed this. Looking at the zip codes, 2,214 folks are from Bellevue zip codes out of the 4,900. 2,218 are from cities to the south and east that are within 10 miles of Redtown Trailhead. 439 were from Seattle zip codes. So these statistics tell a story. It's not just Bellevue residents, it's about half, but people from surrounding communities understand the value of preserving this property. The Isola property is at the boundary between a city of Bellevue Park and a county park. It's at the boundary between the south of Bellevue and Newcastle. And the development decision that will be made by Bellevue will affect all of these neighbors. The Development Services Department does a really incredible job of making sure each development proposal meets city codes, but I'm not sure they have a mandate to look at these regional impacts. Had they decided to do an environmental impact assessment, impact statement early in the proposal process, they would have needed to bring in the perspectives of neighboring communities and local resource agencies, like Department of Fish and Wildlife and the tribes. And as far as we can understand, they may have chosen not to do—not to require an EIS. But I've been really impressed, sitting here tonight, hearing about all the collaboration between the city of Bellevue and neighboring communities. And you folks on City Council are in a position to—to reach out to our neighboring communities, our county and our state. And maybe that is the kind of collaboration and the kind of leadership you can provide to make sure that all these folks, who are not just from Bellevue, but also from surrounding communities who value this property, maybe you folks can be the leaders that we need to reach out to county and state government and bring together a proposal. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is David Kapler.
Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. I was on the Izakua City Council for 18 years, and I can appreciate how meetings can go. I'm a Vice President for Advocacy Izakua Trails Club, and before I mentioned, get into that bit, I want to thank you for the work on climate. My wife is—shares the Izakua chapter of People for Climate Action, and she's been very impressed with the cooperation going on with all the cities. My frustration is trying to get something out of the city of Samamish. If any of you can do anything about Samamish, I think we finally got a city council there that we got maybe a chance with. I was on the—in 1979, I was appointed by John Spelman, County Executive, to the Newcastle Community Plan. Community Plan included a number of great people from the Planning Commission at that time in the city of Bellevue. The big pitch was, of course, village in trying to have as much open space as possible and concentrating development in an area where services would be available efficiently. That model got for the east side, on the east side of Cougar Mountain, on the Talis Development, and then it was picked up by—Port Blakely saw that there was—the environmental community was supportive of that kind of development. And instead of having the five-acre states that Ken Baring was trying to do on Izakua Highlands area of Grand Ridge, we ended up with the Izakua Highlands Urban Village, with 80% park and open space, 20% development. The proposal—we've been trying since forever to get the former Swanson property included within the park, and we're very concerned about the potential development. It—for—as a city council—former city council person, I was always working on safety issues and efficiency issues, and those—in this one just doesn't make sense. If you're at that proposed development, there is no si—it's 1,850 feet before you get to a city sidewalk. It's completely isolated by—if you're a pedestrian or on a bike, you are locked in there. It's completely foreign to what we've been trying to do with—
We've only got 30 seconds left, and I'm dying to hear the end of the story.
Yeah. Another issue there was the—it's—you've got to tear up the road for 1,820 feet to get water to the site, 2,480 to get sewer to the site. It's just not an appropriate place to develop in that form. Thank you.
Well done. You can submit—you can email us the full, if you have to leave anything out.
Yeah, I would be glad to do that. Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Alex Zimmerman, who I do not see in the audience. Our next speaker is Heidi Dean. Ms. Dean, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Your time starts now.
Thanks so much. So loving the amount of community participation tonight. That was really great to see, and I did want to say that I supported Barbara Braun's comments that she made in the earlier oral communications session. I believe she's correct. I know for my household, the reasons for changing would not be compelling. But really, the reason I'm speaking tonight is I wanted to publicly thank Julie Ellenhorn, Mark Heilmann, for their hard work on the Bellevue Essentials class, and those who support them, Carol Ross, Teresa Cut Hill, Mike McCormick-Huntleman, all of the staff members who took time to appear, and the council members, and the Bellevue Essentials alumni who volunteered for those classes. With this 2022 class, there are five Newport Hills residents who will be graduating, and I am among them. That's the— That's the largest number of people in a single class from Newport Hills. And this next year in 2023, there will be three of us serving as officers on the Newport Hills Community Club Board. And you know, it's interesting because I heard Abigail Brown's comments where she said she didn't think that she had anything to learn from Bellevia Essentials. And honestly, that was kind of the same attitude that I had for many years, given how many years I've been doing this with neighborhood leadership. But even though going into the class, I did know a lot. I also learned some really cool stuff about the utilities department. That was an amazing tour. Finance, which is not my strong suit. And, you know, I came away from the city planning exercise with new ideas and an appreciation for how difficult it can be to fit all the pieces together during planning. But I have to say that hands down, the best part of this experience was my classmates. It's really helped me to look at issues that I've been looking at for years through the fresh perspectives of my classmates and just their joyous enthusiasm. And we have some very, very smart people in my class who are excited to get involved. So I'm going to be encouraging that, and I hope you will too. But my very favorite part of what we did with Bellevia Essentials was the very first thing during orientation. We took a neighborhood bus tour, and it's my understanding they'd never done that before. And, you know, just like we're all proud of our families and we like to show them off, we're also proud of our neighborhoods. And it was really neat to hear everybody talk about their neighborhoods. You know, when you travel, you can visit touristy areas of a city, but the best tours always come from the locals. That's where you get to hear all the, see all the great hidden gems and hear the stories and stuff. And I really appreciated that. And I do feel that it was probably the greatest uniting factor for my class and what really got us talking to each other and getting to know each other. So again, thank you to everyone involved. That's all.
Thank you. Our final speaker this evening is David Lai.
Good evening, everybody. My name is David Lai, and I'm the team lead of a volunteer committee advocating have more pickleball courts in Bellevue. And we have started, or we started to talk to the Bellevue Parks Department about 16 months ago. And on behalf of the pickleball community, I want to thank you, the City Council, the Parks Department, and the advisory board to include pickleball courts in the open space system plan for 2022, as well as in the airport field master plan update. So today I want to focus on the airfield park. I urge the City Council to support 16 dedicated pickleball courts in the airfield park. And I'm going to make three points about that. First is because of the small footprint of the pickleball court, 16 courts constitute only about, actually, less than one acre of area, which is a very small fraction of the 14-plus acres that is available in the airfield park. So adding 16 pickleball courts should not affect or have much impact on the planned aquatic center. And this point is very important to us because it's not our intent to displace other users in the park. The second point is, well, currently, there's an acute shortage of pickleball courts in Bellevue, as some of you know. And the 16 courts, although it sounds to be a lot, but it's really, we're really trying to catch up here. And with the, the pickleball sport has a double-digit growth rate. So in five years, it will be doubled. So the 16 courts will be helpful to accommodate this growth. The last point, but not the least, is the 16 dedicated pickleball court will catapult the city of Bellevue into the leadership position for pickleballs in this region. And this number of courts will allow us to hold large, regional-recognized pickleball tournaments, which would bring economic benefits to the city. And you will bring Bellevue to the pickleball map. Now, can you imagine having a pickleball tournament in the airfield park called Bellevue City in a Park Pickleball Tournament? That's what I want to see.
I have a feeling you might win.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Oh, I'm done, okay.
That is all the registered speakers.
Do you want to do a call out for anybody who might be hanging on the line or sitting in the audience?
Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening, either in person or virtually? If you'd like to speak virtually, please raise your hand.
Okay. So I have an announcement to make here. Officer Jackson's funeral is tomorrow. And it will be at the Maidenbauer Center at 1:00. The doors open at 12:00. And there will be a procession through the city starting at 11:15. It's going to begin at 148th Avenue Southeast and Southeast 16th. I think it might be at the fire station there, near there. And then it will travel north, turning west on Northeast 8th Street, then north on 128th Avenue Northeast, west on Northeast 12th Street, and then south on 112th Avenue Northeast, arriving at the Maidenbauer Center. And so they're encouraging anybody who lives or works around the route to stand there in honor of Officer Jackson and his family as the procession goes by. And if you'd like to come to the funeral, come early so you can get a seat. I think it's going to be very, very crowded. Parking's going to be tough as well. But former Councilmember Wallace volunteered that people can park across the street east of Maidenbauer Center and the Wallace properties there. So they do not have to pay to do that. So with that, the meeting is adjourned.